Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome the 2019 to 2023 members of the Providence City Council. From Ward Seven, Councilman John J. Iglesias. From Ward Ten, Councilman Louis A. Aponte. From Ward Four, Councilman Nicholas J. Narducci Jr. From Ward One, Councilman Seth Yurden. From Ward Six, Councilman Michael Correa. From Ward Fifteen, Councilwoman Sabina Matos. From Ward Fourteen, Councilman David Salvatore. From Ward Nine, Councilwoman Carmen Castillo. From Ward Eleven, Councilwoman Mary Kay Harris. From Ward Five, Councilwoman Joanne Ryan. From Ward Three, Councilwoman Nerva LaFortun. From Ward Two, Councilwoman Elect Helen D. Anthony. From Ward Twelve, Councilwoman Elect Catherine A. Irwin. From Ward Thirteen, Councilwoman Elect Rachel M. Miller. And from Ward Eight, Councilwoman, Councilman Elect James E. Taylor.
Madam Clerk, City Council calling this meeting to order, January seventh, twenty nineteen. Roll call, please.
Councilman Iglesias.
Present.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Elect Anthony. Councilman Aponte.
There.
Councilwoman Castillo.
Present.
Councilman Correa.
Present.
Councilwoman Harris.
Present.
Councilwoman Elect Irwin.
Present.
Councilwoman LaFortun.
Present.
Councilwoman Matos.
Present.
Councilwoman Elect Miller.
Present.
Councilman Narducci.
There.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Present.
Councilman Salvatore.
Present.
Councilman Elect Taylor.
Present.
Councilman Yurden.
Here.
You have fifteen present, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next order is in the invocation, we have pastors Priscilla Tinio and Tomas Tinio from the Iglesia Evangelica Emmanuel Church, and Father Tomas Moore Garrett from Providence College. Resumé ladies' choice.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Creator of the universe, we come to you with humble heart to ask for your grace in favor of the city council and of Sabina Matos. Today is a very important day for our beloved city of Providence and the entire state of Rhode Island. We pray for the councilwoman and for every councilman in this city. We bless this city and we bless the state. We ask you, O Lord, to fill them with wisdom, patience, and compassion. We ask you to bless everyone in this city and give them the guidance to do what is right in your eyes. We pray in Jesus' name, amen. I was asked to pray in Spanish. Souverano Dios, en este día invocamos tu santo nombre y reconocemos tu poder y majestad. Te agradecemos la gran oportunidad que le permite a Sabina Matos de formar esta importante decisión en el estado de Rhode Island. Te pedimos que bendiga el estado, bendiga a cada miembro de este cuerpo ejecutivo, bendecimos su vida y su familia. Dale sabiduría y buen tacto al tomar decisiones en el nombre de Jesús, amén.
Father Tomas Garrett from Providence College.
I was asked only to pray in English. I think that's for the good of us all. Eternal God, as a new council begins its work, welcoming familiar faces and new, may a spirit of cooperation animate its proceedings. When division begins to breed frustration, give us the ability to chart a path toward resolution. When criticism chimes from every corner, give us a sense of composure. When expectations fail to be met, let not disappointment exhaust our enthusiasm for this public duty and sacred trust. May this council's work set an example of collaboration and partnership for all those it represents. And throughout this session, may this council always be mindful of the guiding hand of Providence as it seeks to better this community and its people, amen.
Thank you. Next, Madam Clerk, to pledge allegiance by Councilwoman Elect Helen D. Anthony.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the nation of the great and fortunate United States of America, one nation under God, indivisible, universal, infinite, eternal.
Next, singing of the National Anthem. I saw a...
Detail, present, arms.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Who crossed the grass and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet to wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave. Thank you.
First of all, let's hear it for that young lady. I want to take this time, by the way, to welcome everybody here today. I want to welcome Mayor Loza, his staff, representatives in centers who are here, I believe the treasurers here, and all of the state and local dignitaries. It's a great day in Providence around here, I want to thank you all for attending. I also want to welcome all my colleagues and all their families and friends. This is the hundred and thirty-fifth term of the Providence City Council. Think about that for a second, a hundred and thirty-fifth term. Looking out across this great room, I see many friends and families, and I was close, colleagues. We can stand up after the speech. Members, the council helps each other find our way to these great seats. It's a great place.
Give me the mic.
On behalf of my colleagues, I want to thank all of you.
Give me the mic.
Actually, I think the first order of business would actually get a better system. I want to thank all of you for being here. We understand that you, family and friends and colleagues, more than anyone else in our life, for sacrifice the most for us to be here today. We thank you. As I stand before you, I am humbled by the history that this very room holds and the great responsibility that comes from saving these seats. From the men and women who came before us to serve in this city that each of us love so much, yeah. And they have each left an incredible mark on the rich tapestry that is the history of our great American city. For our four new members, for those of us returning, for those taking our leadership positions, I'm reminded of a Broadway song from Hamilton called "History Has Its Eyes On You", and it does. We are making history today with the most diverse legislative body in the history of the city of Providence. What do you think about, say about that, huh? And the men and women that are sitting in these seats made that happen today. Being part of history is never easy, though. What religion must we remember, be remembered for? Did we make the right choices? Did we vote the right way? Did we do all we could for the people that we serve? These same questions were in line with the very first Board of Aldermen and common council members in eighteen thirty-two, and that we still grapple today. As we begin this hundred and thirty-fifth term of the Providence City Council, it is wise to look forward, but we must also recognize the challenges of the past. During the last term, there are many things that this body can be proud of. But there are also moments that call for reflection and require us to act to find solutions to the challenges that we face. I'm proud to say that I believe we handle those moments with grace, and we are better off for the lessons we learned in those trying moments. During the past term, we were able to hold the line on taxes, able to pass budgets that served the people of Providence. We helped grow our credit rating. We improved all our parks. We saw a building boom we haven't seen in a decade that added much-needed revenue, unfortunately, to our shrinking tax base. And that continues today. Crime went down year to year, and we did much to improve the lives of our family, friends, our constituents, and the people of Providence who live and work in this great city. Yet some of the challenges that we have faced during these previous years have left us sometimes divided. It left us feeling sometimes we're on the outside. I call on each and every one of you to leave the past where it belongs. Move forward with an eye on working together for greater good. As a legislative body, we have an enormous responsibility to the people we serve. And we will undoubtedly face challenges again. Let us come together to find solutions and lift our city up. As we move ahead in the next term, we'll be faced with harsh realities now. We still have a looming $1.2 billion unfunded pension obligation. We have a failing infrastructure. We have underperforming school systems. And we have quality-of-life issues that every neighborhood faces across the city. I ask all of you today to not see these items or these issues as obstacles, but to see them as challenges to embrace and overcome. All of us here are here for one reason and one reason only, to serve the people that elected us. As a public servant, I believe each and every one of us has heard or will hear, will continue to hear, the call of President John F. Kennedy. He gave on the steps of the United States Capitol in nineteen sixty-one. It rang true then, it rings true today. He asked all his Americans. He said, "Ask not what your country can do for you, but ask what you can do for your country." Because we all take the ultimatum office, I believe all of us are heeding that call and answering his call just as important it was back then as it is today. Finally, I want to make a show of solidarity for... I have, when I first became a councilman way back when, I had a constituent of mine, some councilmembers, I don't know if you a little while know about it. The constituent found and found the origins of the original city council seal. Would it all, it would all begin, originally some odd years ago. I hand them all out. They were handmade. I offered to every council member as an offer of solidarity, an offer of peace, an offer of working together to betterment of the city of Providence. The seal represents several animals, but it's pretty much close to this. The council's motto, motto for a hundred and thirty-five terms has been to be industrious, to be watchful, and to promote peace. And I ask all of you here today to do the same. Thank you and God bless.
Madam Clerk. Item number two.
Certificates of election of members of the city council, item two. Certificates of election from the Board of Canvassers certifying the election of members of the city council for the city of Providence for the ensuing term of four years ending on the first Monday in January twenty twenty-three. Councilman Seth Yurden, Ward One. Councilwoman Elect Helen D. Anthony, Ward Two. Councilwoman Nerva R. LaFortun, Ward Three. Councilman Nicholas J. Narducci Jr., Ward Four. Councilwoman Joanne Ryan, Ward Five. Councilman Michael J. Correa, Ward Six. Councilman John J. Iglesias, Ward Seven. Councilman Elect James E. Taylor, Ward Eight. Councilwoman Carmen Castillo, Ward Nine. Councilman Louis A. Aponte, Ward Ten. Councilwoman Mary Kay Harris, Ward Eleven. Councilwoman Elect Catherine A. Irwin, Ward Twelve. Councilwoman Elect Rachel M. Miller, Ward Thirteen. Councilman David A. Salvatore, Ward Fourteen. Councilwoman Sabina Matos, Ward Fifteen.
Receive. Next item. Honorable Judge Martinelli.
I ask all of the council people, people elect, please stand. And I'd ask you all to raise your right hands and arms and after I say "I" add your own name. I
I
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support
That I will support.
and uphold
And uphold.
the Constitution
The Constitution.
of the United States of America
Of the United States of America.
the state of Rhode Island
The state of Rhode Island.
and all laws thereunder
And all laws thereunder.
and the city of Providence Home Rule Charter
And the city of Providence Home Rule Charter.
and all city ordinances
And all city ordinances.
that I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
and honestly
And honestly.
discharge
Discharge.
the duties
The duties.
of city council member
Of city council member.
of said city
Of said city.
to the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, all of you.
Madam Clerk, item number five.
Item five, election of the president of the city council.
This time, pick nominations for the president of the Providence City Council.
I would like to nominate Sabina Matos.
Councilwoman Harris nominates Councilwoman Sabina Matos. Do we have a second?
I second the nomination.
Second by Councilwoman Joanne Ryan. Do we have any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? That, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Iglesias.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Aye. Is that Aye?
Councilwoman Castillo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Aponte.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo.
Aye.
Councilman Correa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Irwin.
Aye.
Councilwoman LaFortun.
Upstate.
Councilwoman Matos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Narducci.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Yurden.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, three nays, one extension, the motion carries.
Madam Clerk, the city council is elected. Councilwoman Sabina Matos is the president of Providence City Council.
Oh, no bigs!
And council president. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I
Aye.
Sabina Matos
Sabina Matos.
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support
That I will support.
and uphold
And uphold.
the Constitution
The Constitution.
of the United States
Of the United States.
of America.
Of America.
the state of Rhode Island
The state of Rhode Island.
and all the laws thereunder
And all the laws thereunder.
and the city of Providence
And the city of Providence.
Home Rule Charter
Home Rule Charter.
and all city ordinances
And all city ordinances.
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
and honestly
And honestly.
discharge
Discharge.
the duties
The duties.
of council president
Of council president.
of said city
Of said city.
to the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, council president. And, and before I turn the mic over, I would like to make a presentation to you from your husband, Patrick, and your children. There you are, council president, thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please. My second election of President Protem of the city council. Are there any nominations for President Protem of the Providence City Council? Councilman Taylor.
I'd like to nominate Michael J. Correa.
Is there a second?
Madam President, it would be a privilege to nominate, uh, to second that nomination.
The motion has been made, a second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Madam Clerk, please do a roll call. Oh, no, Councilman Yurden.
Oh, yes, a point of order. I think traditionally it's been when there have not been additional nominations to cast a ballot in favor of that nominee without having a roll call vote. I was asking the chair if there's a reason for a change in the, in the procedure.
Leader Ryan, do you want to answer, please? I would like you to continue with a roll call vote. Thank you, Madam. Thank you, leader. Madam Clerk, proceed. Council President, Council President Matos. Yes. Councilman Aponte.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo.
Aye.
Councilman Correa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Iglesias.
Aye.
Councilwoman Irwin.
Aye.
Councilwoman LaFortun.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mata, I mean, Councilwoman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Narducci.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Yurden.
Upstate.
Of ten ayes, four nays, one extension, the motion carries. Congratulations, Councilman Correa has been elected President Protem.
Repeat after me, please. I
Aye.
Michael Correa
Michael Correa.
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support
That I will support.
and uphold
And uphold.
the Constitution
Constitution.
of the United States of America
The United States of America.
the state of Rhode Island
The state of Rhode Island.
and all laws thereunder
And all laws thereunder.
and the city of Providence Home Rule Charter
The city of Providence Home Rule Charter.
and all city ordinances
And all city ordinances.
and that I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties of Council President Pro Tem of said city to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations, Council President Pro Tem.
Item nine, appointment of members of the city council as police constables administered by Dylan Conley, Chairman and Secretary of the Board of Licenses.
Please ask all city constables to stand at this time. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Rhode Island and the Providence Home Rule Charter, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Constable to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, and thank you to my colleagues for electing me as your Council President. Thank you for this honor and for your support. I want to welcome the Mayor of Providence, Mayor of the Lord's, thank you for being here. Also want to welcome Secretary Estee Le Govea, who's also here, and the other elected officials, Josh Caprio and Red Lombardi, thank you for being here also. Before I continue, I would like to take a moment, and I would like to thank a few people that have helped me to get here today. I would like to thank my husband, Patrick, my son, Diego, and my daughter, Anne Marie, whose love and support made it possible for me to follow my dream of being a public servant. Thank you. I also would like to take a moment and thank my parents. I would like to thank also my friends and my extended family for the support in this adventure. That is a great adventure that I follow every day, so thank you so much. I want to take some time, and I'm going to ask all of you to please acknowledge and thank on behalf of all of us to the wonderful staff for the Providence City Council and the Providence City Clerk Office. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We have a wonderful staff, and they have been through so much and come every day and give 100%. Thank you. As we begin this new year, I was spending time thinking about and reflecting what 2019 means for all of us in public service. Feel free to let me know if I forget. 2019 has been a banner year for many in government. When we think about it, just a 116 U.S. Congress convened with the most diverse group of lawmakers ever in its history, and a record number of women took their seat at the U.S. House Representative. It is also the first year that the Providence City Council will have a woman-led majority. That is not the only first for this city council, and the first Latina to be elected President of this body. Following the step the other great Latinas like Representative Grace Diaz that has set, been a trade blazer in this arena. Thank you. Councilwoman Ryan is the first woman appointed Charity Leader of this body. Councilwoman La Fortune is the first Haitian-American woman elected to the Providence City Council. And she is also the first formally undocumented person elected to the Providence City Council. Councilwoman Miller is the first member of the LGBTQ community elected to the Providence City Council. Councilwoman Irwin is one of the youngest members ever elected to the Providence City Council. These are important firsts for our city. These firsts help pave the way for others and remind us that although we have come this far, there is still much work that needs to be done to make sure that everyone has a seat at the table. As Providence has grown, our community has changed. One, our once colonial city has become home to a diverse and unique population of individuals of various nationalities, races, cultures, and orientations. And this shift in our community has truly embodied the ideals of Roger Williams of a lively experiment. This body now more than ever, more than ever before, will represent the people we were elected to serve. The next four years are not going to be easy, but I believe that we're ready for the challenge that lies ahead. As your Council President, I promise that I will work with each of you to reach our shared goals and objectives and for the people we serve. I promise that I will be inclusive and thoughtful of each other and of those that we are representing. This past term wasn't always difficult, but I believe that we have handled the challenging moment with dignity and with humility. And as we move into the new term, it is my hope that we can come together and do the work of the people and for the people, and that we can leave the past squarely where it belongs, leave the past. Today marks a new beginning, and we have the opportunity to make Providence into the city of the future. We have the opportunity to make affordable housing not just a priority, but a reality in the capital city. We have the opportunity to continue to grow our tax base by encouraging and lifting up small businesses and encouraging more economic development from the neighborhoods all the way to the large corporations. We have the opportunity to make Providence one of the cleanest cities in the United States. We have the opportunity to create legislation that will move Providence forward. Don't be mistaken, these are challenges that lie ahead. We do have challenges, but I believe the new city council is ready to face it head-on. And today, I ask each of one of you, members of this Providence City Council, to join me in facing this term by seizing the moment and working together to make our city to be not just the best in New England, but the best in the United States. Thank you. Majority Leader Ryan.
Thank you, Madam President. There being no further business before this honorable body, I now make a motion to adjourn until our next regularly scheduled council meeting on January 17.
Councilwoman Harris, do I second?
I second.
All those in favor? Those opposed? We adjourn. Thank you.